Okay then. Then it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Ledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call. Ms. Atchison?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Ho?
Here.
Mr. Merlington? Anyone heard from Mr. Merlington tonight?
I just called him, he did not pick up.
Okay. Ms. Naprowski? Mr. Nixon?
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here. We have, uh, recognize our planning official, Andy Moore, our city planner, and we also have Mr. Womack, the manager, and Ms. Johnson, the city clerk here tonight. Um, we have, uh, the minutes of the meeting of November first that we need to look over and approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
Support.
Any issues on meetings from, or the minutes from November first that we need to address? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the minutes from November first, please signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of tonight's agenda on page one of your packet. Um. I do want to point out a slight, uh, possibility for a, um, correction on the agenda before we adopt it tonight. It's minor, but it's down all the way in the open discussion for issues on the agenda, item eleven. Uh, the under correspondence, item A two there, Algoma Township Master Plan Update. It should be Cortland, yeah. That's the only thing that I saw that was a potential issue. Is there anything else we need to look at? Okay, um. I get a motion then?
Take a motion that we approve the agenda with that one.
Okay, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda with that addendum, please signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Um, item six is public comments. So those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. Uh, this is the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Um, I will add to that, that there are two scheduled public hearings for ordinances tonight, so there, you may have another opportunity to speak for that, but this is our general public comments. Not hearing any public comments, we'll move on to, um, item seven, conflicts of interest and ex parte communication inquiry. There's any, do any of the planning commissioners have anything that they need to report along that line? Looking at everyone suspiciously? Okay, no. Moving on then. Item eight, scheduled public hearings. On AK, uh, public hearing for an ordinance to amend section thirty-two, five-five-two pertaining to the non-residential design requirements of chapter thirty-two zoning of the court of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs. The proposed ordinance would modify and establish non-residential design requirements. So, um, I will open up that public hearing now. If anyone has anything that they would like to let us know about that. Not seeing a rush here. Is there anything on Zoom? Okay. Then I will close that public hearing. And we will, I don't need this, it's like, it's like playing with it. Um, I will close that public hearing and we will move to a discussion on that ordinance. Um, is there? Would you like to lead us through what we're doing here, Mr. Womack?
Yeah, so this is, um, you know, we, we've been working on this for quite some time, but, uh, basically we anticipate a few new industrial buildings to be built. We want to make sure that they were attractive in design, but still not be terribly costly to put up. Um, so we started out with that as kind of our, our guiding light. Um, and I think we did some good work. I think there's some good basic language in here. Planners also looked at it. Um, something that's changed, I believe, between the last time that you guys took a look at this ordinance and now is the planner and I discussed it and, uh, under the old language, this is the new language, um, there was non-residential design language and does design requirements, which theoretically would apply to both commercial and industrial. While we are simultaneously trying to say, well, we want this industrial design. So, um, Mr. Moore changed that non-residential design requirement language to now say, I think, commercial design language and then separately industrial design language. It just makes it a little bit easier for us to understand what you're talking about. Um, but other than that, I think it, uh, reflects, uh, the work that you guys have put into it over the last several months. Um, and I think it will be an improvement towards reducing costs for industrial buildings while making sure that.
Hope that was the one change that we had made. The rest of the language is the exact same. So as Mr. Womack said, subsection B is for commercial district only, subsection B is for industrial district buildings. And then there's that departure language in subsection B that would theoretically apply to either. Other than that, everything else is the same as it was in the previous.
You know, it seems like a good year or six that we've been talking about that, so.
Yeah. Been a long time coming.
Didn't take as long as the fence ordinance.
Yeah. So. I, yes?
Um, and, uh, one thing that I wanted to bring up under item four of that, uh, number four, when it talks about the HVAC system, one thing we had discussed when we were talking about dumpster enclosures and stuff, we did not want the vinyl, like where you put up the, um, fencing and then put the vinyl slats through there. And when I was reading this earlier today, it says, you know, decorative concrete, vinyl, aluminum composite boards. Do we want to leave vinyl in there? Because I don't want that to happen. And then, because you do see that in some cities where they put the chain link and then the vinyl slats.
So, um.
Be covered in the fence ordinance that we're working on.
Yes, so correct me if I'm wrong, but at least the fence slats I remember are this really kind of thin aluminum type material. Uh, but at least when I read that, in my mind, I was thinking vinyl, like white privacy fence.
Okay.
Now, we could just add real quick, if a motion would like to add this, um, just say, you know, similar to the dumpster enclosure, we just will give it, uh, Mr. Hall's gotten me always calling it cyclone fence, but it's chain link fence.
Yes.
With vinyl slat.
But specifically, I'm sorry, specifically in that same item four, you can go farther down, we already are saying chain link fence and other similar transparent materials are prohibited.
Yeah, I, I'm thankful for Mr. Conley having read the homework.
Yeah.
I did read the, I'm, my brain must.
No, I, you read it.
But I did read it, but the problem is, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't having vinyl.
Chain link fence.
I don't know. Vinyl, I didn't know that.
Vinyl was not the reason.
Yeah, it was, because.
One of the reasons obviously that you guys are here is, you know, we can sit here and then write ordinances all day long, but until it's actually interpreted, it doesn't mean anything, right? So, now we always appreciate you guys reading things and interpreting them and then asking questions.
That's all. I, I just wanted to make sure that when we were incorporating vinyl in there, what we were actually saying, I wanted to double check that. And that's fine, the vinyl privacy fence, like I have and Clint has, that's fine, that's, that's fine.
Any other discussion?
Um, it should be screamed from, not form, any adjacent property. Um, the last fine.
Right. You're going to get the official title of word aired.
Gee, thanks. Nobody says it's Sherry.
Anything else that we need to address or discuss?
No, that was like the only thing I saw that.
Well, then I would entertain a motion if someone would like to give me one.
I'll move.
Are you clear with which, what motion he's giving?
Right.
Okay. I'll support that. Any other discussion? Are they all in favor of the motion? Please signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Recommend that to the city council.
Yes.
Item B, we have another public hearing tonight, uh, for an ordinance to amend, uh, section thirty-two, six-one-six pertaining to parking application and the design of chapter thirty-two zoning of the code of ordinances of the Cedar, City of Cedar Springs. The proposed ordinance would modify the parking application design standards. So, um, this is another opportunity for the audience. If you would have anything you'd like to let us know about, um, our potential new parking ordinance, then here's your opportunity to do so. And also if anyone on Zoom. Not seeing, um, anyone volunteering here on that, we'll, we will then close that public hearing and move on to discussion. So. Again, would you like to kick us off here, Mr. Womack?
I'd love to. So as you guys are aware, virtually all cities have a requirement for if you have this type of business or this type of property use, you have to have X number of parking spaces. Um, and you know, sometimes it's kind of a, a generalized idea of how many parking spaces a business might need. Um, and sometimes I think it creates these, uh, islands of asphalt that you see at Meyer and the malls where there's ten million parking spaces. Uh, but on the other hand, we also don't want somebody creating, say, a Starbucks with one parking space. Um, so, um, what we've done is we've changed the language to say, you must have these parking spaces to, you must have these parking spaces unless you can convince the city planning commission to reduce that number based on a, you know, an acceptable justification. Um, and then to keep you guys on the straight and narrow, you then would have to provide that justification as part of your site plan approval. So it can't be just, yeah, we, we agree with that. It's, we agree with that because they presented evidence of whatever. So I think it just makes it a easy way to, uh, give you kind of greater oversight about the minimum number of parking spaces. It's pretty simplistic.
Does that then leave our hands tied if something should come up where they should have had more parking?
I mean.
I mean, it's hindsight in a lot of areas anyways, but I, I just wondered.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think the bigger problem you're gonna have is where somebody's trying to shoehorn a business into a property that's too small for it. And then try to say, oh, well, we totally don't need that number of parking spaces. You know, part of our job and your job is to say, well.
Realize that.
It's just not gonna work. Um, versus a business that's coming into a piece of property and saying, look, we're a new business, we can't afford it, or we're gonna start out slow or whatever. And then we obviously have the tool saying, well, you must install deferred parking on your site point. So that when we have these problems, you're then obligated to increase your parking.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, this is, this, this seemed, this seemed quite elegant compared to many of the things that we try to do. Um, so I was pretty happy with it. Is there, I get a motion on this? Then we can move forward?
I'll make that motion that's printed in our agenda.
And noted.
You heard the discussion? All in favor of the motion to recommend this ordinance to the city council, please signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Lovely. So we're already up to item nine, site plan reviews. Um. I'm going to butcher your name again, I'm sorry. Uh, but item A, Jennifer Ruzma, one ninety North Main Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan, four-nine-three-one-nine, the applicant. Uh, well, yeah, okay, the applicant is seeking special land use approval for, excuse me, for a licensed childcare center. Can you get us, uh, bring us back up to speed on this, Mr. Womack?
Sure. So, uh, Epkin provided a site plan at your last meeting, which the planning commission reviewed, uh, discussed a number of points that you'd like to see changed and modified before today's meeting. Um, I saw when we sat down with Epkin and her architect engineer, um, and we discussed the issues and, uh, we were then later on presented with a site plan, uh, a modified site plan. Unfortunately, that site plan got to me late. I was not able to complete a review of it, uh, but I believe that Mr. Moore did, um, which there are some issues that he brings up that probably still need to be at least discussed. Mr. Moore, why don't you go for it real quick while I look at my notes? Cause I did have two or three minor notes I wanted to address.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Womack. So the site plan that was, uh, pr- uh, provided, I think this is very similar to the one that you received at the meeting last time, as they called the applicant, presented a plan that had a kind of revised parking layout and it seemed like you had reacted fairly really to that issue. So that's what has been brought forward to you. Um, so there are still twenty spaces on the property, which is the same as, as was there before. Um, so there are eleven angled spaces on the south side of the site. There are six perpendicular spaces facing the east side. There are three ADA spaces on the east, and if you recall, that's where the senior access would be kind of on the east side of that building. And then there's sort of a drop-off lane and a bypass lane right in front of the building. Ideas that someone could come in and then if they wanted to, they could, you know, park real quick and lock their child in, or if there's, um, you know, a, a larger vehicle, or if someone is just dropping off a child, then they can do that with. Um, the required total parking demand is right around twenty spaces, twenty to twenty-two. Um, they've provided twenty, so in terms of what they have there, um, I think is generally adequate as far as the banners are concerned. Um, there is a modified landscaping plan was also included here, so there is an existing row of, of arbor by the on the south side of the property. They have proposed additionally four groups of junipers along that property line with creeping hurdle in between. There's some additional shrubs on the southeast portion of the site, and there's ornamental tree along Main Street. Um, so there is some additional landscaping being proposed for the site. Um, in addition to that, there's fencing that's along the rear portion of the site on the east that would need to be. Um, there are two light poles proposed on the parking lot showing at a height of twenty feet, uh, using fully cut-off LED fixtures, which we see at times, so if it lights, it's fine. And then in our report on page three, we just kind of provided an update to some of these issues. So if you recall, our first staff report, we just sort of identified these, um, six questions that were just worthy of discussion, weren't being super critical, but it was just sort of observations that we made. At the end of each of those paragraphs in italics, uh, we have sort of our updated online business, and that we're gonna see how things. Um, the first, I wouldn't, I don't wanna say issue, but the first observation we had is that just in the sense of, or in the spirit of keeping things easy to work with moving forward, we would prefer to see one site plan instead of two showing different things. Um, so that's been addressed. Um, we've talked about the parking and circulation, um. The layout, I think, is a little bit better. We still kind of have the same concern potentially about parking and congestion. There's just no way around that. Given the potential number of children on the site, plus the addition of seniors in the afternoons. Um, it remains a possibility that the site is going to be. It's something that you'll have to talk about. Um. Talking about the number of children that would be received for care. So at the last, uh, meeting, there'd be a maximum of thirty-six received for before and after care. The main childcare facility would be authorized for sixty. It's up to the total of ninety-six children in the building. Um, although she said they're probably not gonna get there. But again, kind of giving, giving you an idea for capacity wise and how that relates to traffic. Um, there certainly is the potential for the site to be really well utilized with. Um, city manager, uh, Mr. Womack was asking for a five-foot setback along that southern lot line past month. Um, I think they got to about three feet. It didn't look like, just based on where they had to be for the angled parking base dimensions for the drive aisle with the requirements to be able to get to five feet. It looks like they did put some effort into that and got to about three feet, which helps. Um. And.
Moore, did you notice that you stepped back off the sidewalk?
So on the previous plan, there was potential for, for someone to park parallel to the sidewalk, and one of the concerns that we had mentioned was that someone would be out there and park on the sidewalk or fling your car door open over the sidewalk, and that's pretty much eliminated with this kind of. Um, trash service is an observation, so the trash bin faces south across some parking spaces, faces, which is fine if nobody's parked there. The car is here, obviously, that's gonna be not accessible to the dumpster enclosure facing sideways physically. Um, not a big deal as long as they can coordinate traffic at times where it doesn't overlap. Um, then we talked a little bit about the ADA speeds for the ADA spaces for the senior access. One of those would need to be banned accessible and they provided that. Recite the ADA spaces on the side of a building. One of them looks like it's banned accessible. So that's good to solve. So I think really, um, the major, I think the concern is overstating it, but yeah, the only potential issue I think that the project officials talked about is just the number of kids, traffic movements, safety, all that kind of stuff. And I know that planning commission and the applicant are both obviously working towards the same goal here, so I think there's a, there's a suspicion whether you're comfortable with this or if there's a potential team that would like to be.
Yeah, it's like you just add two minor things to that. The first is, I'm still not a hundred percent, uh, sure what the applicant's, uh, I guess, business plans are for child daycare at some part of the day, and then senior citizen using this as some kind of community center at some other time of day. I'd kind of like to hear, you know, the timing on that. If there's overlap, now you're gonna have chaos of people picking up and dropping off and parking and all sorts of things. Um, and then also, you know, this is a small-ish parking lot, um, with not a ton of room to maneuver. And the applicant and I talked about the potential, uh, for her, her employees, uh, whoever, uh, to park in the North Park parking lot area. Um, which, you know, I'm sure that the city council would be able to come up with some kind of agreement to that effect, but I don't want, uh, people walking in the roadway, driveway, whatever you wanna call that area, uh, between, uh, you know, this building and the North Park area. What I'd like to see is at the minimum have some kind of walkway on this property, with a sidewalk, paved something or other, so that if you were walking between the city's parking lot and the building, they can do it out of the road. Not saying it has to be done right now, but I don't want it to be, you know, thirty cars parked over there with a whole bunch of kids walking there into their, their businesses saying, well, we're not responsible for putting in a sidewalk. Uh, so if, at the very least, if it's deferred at the city's, you know, uh, choosing that they have to install it at some point in the future, I'd feel more comfortable.
Can I ask, is there excess traffic with cloud cannabis now being open?
There is. Um, so the cloud cannabis, if you guys will recall the site plan on that, they're supposed to enter off Main Street and then exit through this roadway. So there will be a much more traffic than there is now.
Do we know? I, I haven't studied, uh, cloud cannibuses. I know they just opened. Have you noticed when they've been the busiest or?
Yeah, so they've only been open for a couple of days and not exactly a place to hang out at. Um, but, you know, it, it's gonna be steady. Uh, they are a well-known brand, just like Woom. They do have a.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that.
And they do have a good-sized parking lot, so there, there will be cars going through there. Um, now, I don't expect a lot of cross-traffic on that driveway. Um, I just don't, you know, I just don't like the idea of people having to walk in the road if we can prevent that from happening. Um, I, I understand that, uh, this would be a significant amount of asphalt or, or concrete to install, probably twenty to thirty thousand dollars worth. So I don't want to force a child daycare center, which is desperately trying to make a budget work to open, to have that cost now, unless it becomes a common later date. Um, of course, the city does, I believe, have the ability to force that regardless, uh, under our ordinances. So I don't want it to be either a shock to the applicant that that could be required in the future. But it's kind of dependent on whether people are using that parking lot or not. You know, we're not gonna require a sidewalk to nowhere even.
Any question for, more questions for Mr. Womack or Mr. Moore? Want to give you the opportunity? We, we've just talked a lot about your project. Is there anything you'd like to add or let us know about what we've? Yeah, I probably should have formally invited you.
Jennifer Ruzma.
Thank you.
Um, the for the child daycare, this, um, before and after care, it would be from six to eight-thirty. Heading to school, and then the same with after school, it would be until three-thirty and six. Um, the senior son, it would be from nine to three, so there would not be that regards.
Sorry, when was the after care?
Three-thirty to six.
You don't think there's gonna be any cross-traffic between three and three-thirty? Or would seniors be kicked out and say, get out of here right now, so you don't?
They will know that they have to be gone by three, because they're not, it's, the license will not allow for it to both be in there at the same time.
I just gotta finish up my coffee. I just gotta finish up this conversation, you know?
Wrong.
I think we're still running the same thing we had last month, I recall, was the sidewalk issue with parking. As I think, and we talked about being contingent on expansion as you grow.
Yes, we were just hoping for the staff to be able to park there, which would just be adults. Um, from what I, my talk with cloud cannabis, I believe they don't open until like ten. I don't expect there to be much business there in the morning at seven, eight, when kids are getting seven to nine.
Yeah.
They're being dropped off at daycare. I don't think that's gonna be that much of an issue, but, um, yeah, we were just looking for the adults to.
Yeah, I think personally my concern is just make sure there's a walkway there that's designated for people. Uh, cannabis being in that building, if it was a vacant building or vacant lot, I wouldn't care, but I'm just worried about traffic there, the safety of our citizens. Well, that's, I think, the one thing I think I'd like to see that, I think I'd be comfortable if that's contingent on the expansion as you grow and you have to use those spaces for people. We can add that sign later.
Would it be possible to just add an opening in the back of the gate for them to come through because my property butts up to it?
If there was, now, I can't see, I don't have a map right now, but if there was a, um, a way to where you could funnel people past the end, the exit from of cannabis. I don't know where that is relative to your property, but it seems to me all the traffic from there, because you've got nowhere to go but that North Park parking lot, all the traffic is going to head south out of that and then west.
From the, from the parking, the parking lot butts up to the back of my property, which is gonna be fenced. Could I just put a gate from the parking lot to there instead of having to do a large sidewalk?
I guess I was thinking that. I mean. I think I'd like to see what it looks like, right, in comparison to where the draw, the exit is, just to make sure that, that jives, and if it does, I, I, that makes sense to me, and I get it, cause sidewalks are not cheap.
Yeah.
And we're, and we, and we definitely know this is needed in our town, a hundred percent. So you, you have our support there for sure. Just making sure the safety of our citizens and the people that are going in and out of there, you know, the garbage thing, that's on you, you know, if you gotta get your garbage timed.
They said that doing it before afterwards was not an issue.
All right, yeah. I'm not too concerned about that. Mine was just making sure that we had safety for the people that are working there and.
I, I would be open to any path that allowed you to bypass the traffic coming out of cloud cannabis. If you're going farther to the, farther to the east. Um, there should be very little traffic on that road.
I don't think that could. So while applicant is telling us that her employees who are adults could park back there. Uh, I'm still concerned about adults getting run over.
Yes.
Um, but it would not shock me in the least if people were taking their kids and parking there and then walking, you know, through the same area. Let's not discount this. While it's only cloud cannabis traffic, it's only adults. Uh, there will still be cars going back there, even if it's employees running over employees. Um, so, you know, I, I'm not opposed to if it's on her property and she wants to keep it free from snow and whatever else. But, you know, I think at the very minimum, we need to have some kind of deferred. Space shown saying, you know, what, if it becomes a necessity, it becomes a necessity.
I'm trying to find a map that.
I'm looking at this and I'm looking, I'm trying to look at Google Maps, going back and forth between where this is.
Well, I guess I have a question because Mike, you had told me that when that bridge was done, that you were going to be taking out the footbridge. Bridge to funnel the kids from the trailer park down that pathway there. So I guess it just kind of feels like I'm being paid for something that you're okay with kids walking down there without a sidewalk. Because you want to take out the footbridge, but. The adults are not okay to walk down there or through the back of the property.
Okay. What, what do you say?
I'm just not sure what the difference is.
You're talking about that footbridge is in the back, the crowd, that little one that's back there.
Yeah, he said, he told me that when the regular bridge was finished, that he was taking out that footbridge.
For sure, that wasn't certain confidence.
Didn't realize it was.
Is there an easement through there on the same, I thought that is.
I'm sure you're just asking what the difference is and you just would like a.
Yeah. I'm comfortable with the fence back here with a gate opening, but, I mean, Mike, you're, Mr. Womack, you're thinking exactly what I'm thinking. I, I think you will have parents. On occasion, probably not regularly. I don't know how I can control that. Yeah.
Well, and again, it's not like the city is, you know, bloodthirsty for a sidewalk. We just want to make sure that at some point in the future, if we have to do this for safety. The applicant's aware of it.
Yeah.
And there's no sure way to make sure the applicant is aware of it. They have it showed as deferred on a site plan. We don't want to cost this applicant or any applicant more money than that absolutely necessary.
Again, I don't feel it's necessary for it when you first open, but I do think there needs to be a contingent, something on here that says when we get to this section.
If there is.
I don't know how to add that. Is, is there a way to do that?
Well, and so again, I've, I've got limited experience in this, but I'm saying deferred sidewalk. Basically you show. You know, a five foot gap on the property where nothing else can be built. And so sidewalk, you know, to be installed at a later date. So that later on, when applicant says, well, I'd like to put a shed or something there, we can say, oh, sorry, there's a sidewalk in here. Um, just because, you know, you don't physically see it. I don't know if Mr. Moore has some other option.
Well, that's what I would do. And I mean, the site plan that we have here from the applicant shows the sidewalk and here is their building.
Okay.
But now this is all gone.
Well, and this is again, part of the issue is I don't know if, you're, what now all that's gone.
I don't think we're looking at the same one. I don't see a sidewalk on ours. So they're saying coming from back here, just putting a little fence right here where they. Instead of having to come. All, all the way around. You know what I mean? Just making them come.
And I, I, I will recognize you in a moment. I, I, I want to kind of bring this back in because I have like six conversations going at the same time. I'd like to, like to bring us all on the same page. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there was just, we just kind of, and I understand there's a lot of questions here. So we all kind of broke into our little groups. But I wanted to bring it back and, and, and start over here. I have heard, and I'm having trouble to hear myself. Identifying where the sidewalks are on the site plans that we have. So I see a side, I see a sidewalk on Main Street. Is there no requirement under normal circumstances for us to have a, a sidewalk along, along Pine?
Mr. Conley, so, and this is the problem when you drop off site plans late. Um, I'm looking at the site plan that was sent to me on the twenty ninth. It does have a deferred sidewalk on it.
Okay, so just now.
Must be an old one. Because this is different than what we're looking.
Okay, okay. That would explain some of the confusion we're having.
The one that you're looking at, what we saw.
The one that.
During our meeting that she brought and showed it to us.
It must be, well, it's the previous one compared to the one that was dropped off on the twenty. Yeah. I apologize for that. You guys haven't seen the most recent one. Because it was dropped out, well, it was emailed to me on the twenty ninth.
Okay.
So I will state that this is, is marked as a deferred sidewalk, which meets my requirements. It explains why some of the things that Mr. Moore noticed in his report, I didn't see.
Okay, we're wrapping up two different sets of plans. Which illustrates the issue that we had in the first point that you. One plan is better. So, okay, uh, so that at least clears up the confusion. Cause I think we could have spun out of control on that pretty quickly. Looking at different sets of plans. Um, what's your suggestion, Mr. Womack? Where do we go from here? Um, because I'd like to be able to see some plans before I make decisions based upon them.
We, we did this a lot a year or two ago. We have prelim approval subject to. Um, obviously this is just a little different because you haven't seen it, but, you know, it, it, it isn't significantly different from what we've been talking about, just some of these minor issues which we're arguing about. Are shown on here. Um, looking at this one, uh, I'm much more comfortable with it than I was previously. Um, so apart from, oh, what Mr. I apologize, what Ms. Wurzma has been discussing with the, the timing of the seniors and all the other thing. I think I'm comfortable with this apart from just a few minutes to review it. And obviously we want the planning commission to review it as well.
I have a question because of course I'm looking at the old one. Is there, and is there still the two lanes?
Yep.
And did that get adjusted or addressed like we talked about last week with the signage or something?
The crosswalk?
The crosswalk, yes, thank you.
There is, there is a crosswalk listed here.
Okay.
And I, again, I apologize, I.
That's okay. I just, I want to make sure because that was a big thing that we were worried about. You know, we're just worried about the kids.
So I, I, I think everything that has been stated has been accurate. But obviously, again, I want the planning commission to feel comfortable that they've had a chance to review it. Um, so, you know, if we want to keep moving this on, um, despite the latest mission and the, the error of the, putting this into the agenda. Uh, again, I'm comfortable with you guys giving prelim approval subject to, uh, review. You guys could appoint Mr. Conley to review it, make sure that it meets all the expectations that you guys discussed tonight. I hate to get loosey goosey like that because obviously everybody's ability to review it is important. But I don't think there's anything that's different in here compared to what we've actually talked about. And it is similar to what you guys have seen previously. You could also print these out real quick and you guys could look at them.
Let's do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
I would prefer that.
We just take, you know, ten or fifteen minutes of our time, but.
Not that we don't believe in Mr. Womack, but I.
Yeah, yeah, just do that real quick.
As far as the agenda goes, I mean, is it possible that we could, I mean, I know it's possible within Robert's rule, but I just want to make sure I can do this properly. Can we suspend this for a moment, move on to other agenda items while we're waiting for printing and then come back or?
Yeah, take a motion to table for a few minutes and then you guys can move on.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Few minutes.
Okay.
All favor of tabling this until, uh, we get the maps we're looking for?
Hi.
Aye.
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 Sorry, we didn't wait for you.
Sorry about that.
Then the, we're tabling this until later in the meeting so we can move on through the agenda.
That's what I was worried about.
And, um. Now, uh, we might have some, we'll, we'll do what we can here with Mr. Womack gone and we'll see, we'll be flexible about it. So. Let's move on to item ten then. In the meantime, um, other business. Uh, item ten A is discussion on proposed solar energy systems regulations. Can you walk us through that before?
I can.
Okay.
This isn't in ordinance, you know, format yet or anything. This is just sort of a draft, sort of what it might look like. Uh, we discussed this a little bit at the previous meeting. We had a feature, we didn't get the. Added some definitions. One of the things that was discussed is whether there was any appetite for a freestanding ground mounted solar collector. No, we're only looking at, we're only looking at rooftop mounted solar energy panels at this time. So the definitions were updated. Along those lines, um, in the course of writing this, I also published a lot of ordinances that have been published recently. Kind of borrowed some i- ideas from there. Uh, Mr. Conley, I think at the last meeting you had a question about, um, you know, not wanting to regulate. People with individual smaller solar panels that are just for like. So we put that under, um, section five sixty-one A, which is on the next page, second page of the. Um, of the ordinance when we're getting into the actual regulations. So that's the language added there. Uh, then under subsection A one, that prohibits the freestanding solar energy system. Um. There's subsection two, added a couple of things here. Um, one is that we're going to exempt them from screening requirements. I can do that here, but obviously that starts the purpose. A bunch of wall around it. That came out here. Um, also just for the, in the purpose of completeness, we added some language under subsection C. That states that even if it's a non-conforming building for some reason, this would not, not create an unlawful. Want to encourage people to make. That was in subsection C. Um. Subsection, everything else is the same. Subsection A, uh, has language in there that just says there's no. Uh, limit to the number of them permitted on a lot. Large commercial or a large industrial building, they want to load up the whole. This would enable them to do that. Um, everything else is the same as it was before. So again, this isn't something that we really have to hurry on if we're not in time to, but if we're. Comfortable with it, we can move forward with the public hearing in the couple of months. Ordinance format that actually will be intended. Questions or comments or?
I just like that you took out the ground mounted solar or solar. I appreciate that because that was really concerning me. With. Filling up the yards and that concerned me so much.
I appreciate the addition of the solar thermal systems where they're not electric. They're, they're making. Right. Cause I knew that those existed, but I wasn't sure that we were. Bringing that.
Yeah, we had to do a little additional research just to make sure that I had all my technology correct. There's language changes somewhat quickly on this and the technology evolved.
And we'll probably back here for too much longer.
Or we'll be tweaking.
Responding to the new technologies.
Yeah.
Tweaking it later on.
Absolutely. So since this is just a discussion item, is there anything else that we need to?
Good so far.
Yeah, I'm happy with this.
Yeah.
That kind of one of the grounds. Well, because it got a giant side yard.
Yeah, wow.
Don't worry about it. I'll, I'll get over it. Seems that a lot of the more. Moral communities are, are pretty generous with the ground mounted. Um, but it's not uncommon that you're not the only smaller community with city-sized lots.
The next item on other business then is the item B discussion on proposed, uh, removal of the RR B one and table of uses. Is that something that you're up to speed on, Mr. Moore, or is that a Mr. Womack thing? Okay. Um, then. Trying to find. Cause I, I'm pretty sure that we need.
Mike for this one.
Mr. Womack for both of the next things on the agenda. So until he comes back. Thinking that maybe we should go into recess until we, because we have nothing we can do until we get the. Having any opinion on that one way or the other?
That's fine.
Okay, uh, then.
Make that motion.
Your support for that?
Support.
All in favor of going to recess until Mr. Womack returns?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know if you have to bang for recess or not. But consider us in recess. How about that? Never done this before. We're going to bring the meeting back to order, so I will hit it this time because it feels right. So. We're, we're going to move back to item nine, the site plan review, now that we have, uh, the most recent site plan in front of us. And I can see that we do have that sidewalk marked on there and that we do have the deferred part in there. Um. That, as you said, that meets what we were looking for.
So I guess the question, again, I don't know what Mr. Moore indicated while I was out of the room, but, uh, you know, whether the. Planning Commission is comfortable with the plan to have, you know, traffic and parking from six to nine and then from nine thirty to three and then three thirty to six. Uh, do you think the site's going to work out? It is compact site. Uh, they've done the best that they think they can with the space that they have available. Um, but do you think that is a workable plan for, you know, kind of how to run a business like this?
I do believe so. I think it'll be a little chaotic when everybody's dropped off, but once everybody's cleared out of there, I think it'll be a fine site. I just think. You can have a half an hour to forty-five minutes of. They're busy and then it'll. Here in those times, right? Like I said, those cross-traffic times.
With the plan you see in front of you now, uh, I think they did a pretty good job of, you know, putting in traffic safety devices and bypass lanes and. Hopefully people, you know, know that they have to go around the, uh, the back of the site to exit. Which coming out of that turn, it should be fairly slow. But yeah, uh, I, I think it, it's a good looking site with this site plan. Um, Mr. Moore, was there anything else that you wanted to have addressed in the site plan?
Um, no, not specifically. So the only real question that we had, the planning commission. Consideration was just a general question about circulation. Access, rest, drainage, safety. How this is presented.
I do have one question about when would that sidewalk be required to be added?
Yeah, so the city has an ordinance that we can require people to install a sidewalk anytime. You know, when we talk about a site plan showing, you know, a sidewalk, it's more important for the herd aspect of it. Similar to like a parking lot access between parking lots. You know, we, we don't necessarily want you to do it right now. We want you to do it when the next site is developed, right? So same thing here. As long as we don't have any problems, we don't have kids getting run over, we don't have five hundred cars parking back there all the time. We're not gonna want it or require it. Um, it's only at some point in the future and obviously we would speak with the property owner before we even got to that. Say, hey, look, you know, here's what we're thinking, you know, where's this work for your needs? Um, but yeah, I can't give you an answer apart from at some point when it's necessary.
And I think I'm also comfortable with a gate being put back there to make sure that there aren't any issues.
Yeah, so uh, again, from the city's perspective, it's less about the sidewalk as it is presenting your. Please, your customers a safe place to walk. Um, and part of that is snow removal. Removing snow off grass is difficult. Um, it's much easier on sidewalks. So if she wanted to have people walking through the grass on her property, you know. That would almost certainly make it so we'd never require a sidewalk being installed, but. You know, it's also not safe to be crunching through, you know, six inches of snow to get near whatever.
That'd be her customers' issues once they're on her property.
Uh, kind of. Kind of, obviously the city has our concerns as well.
My bigger concern would be this roadside access where that. Maybe is.
Well, and, and, and sometimes, you know, we could say, look, if you wanna have people walking through your backyard, that's issue, that's your issue. On the other hand, we can't see that of everything. That's why we want a deferred sidewalk. Um, is you have a cer- certain amount of formality to a sidewalk.
I'm not talking about getting rid of deferred sidewalk. I'm just talking about how do we make sure that.
You're safe.
Sidewalk is the last result that we needed.
So if you do, if, if you do put the gate in the back, you're. It's gonna have to be, um, it's not gonna be locked, depending on what time of the day people are coming in. Oh, so it'd be one with a code. So it would lock when they weren't opening. And I'm sure that. If they're walking through your yard, you're probably gonna make it safe. Alright.
Um, I had a question on, because we didn't have the other plans in front of us at the time, the uh, three foot setback that was mentioned earlier. To what, on what direction is that and relative to what?
So that was on the southern property line, so if you look. Um, where the vehicle would be. And there's, or that was, I think, basically the parking lot came right up. That southern property line and they've given a little bit of room there. And that's where they have the little groups of green shrubs.
So, yeah, so the property to the immediate south is the Veterans Park. Not going to be developed, it's a parkland. Um, but you know, we still don't want them like on the property line either. So three foot, I think is acceptable at that location. My concern is more about the sidewalk.
Wasn't there another side though that you were worried about?
Yeah, so the west side joining the um, sidewalk, um, you know, as Mr. Moore indicated, generally it's about. Parked there, or if you have car doors opening, you don't want anybody ever blocking the sidewalk.
Oh, that was before.
Because that's an elevated sidewalk right there and the doors will hit the bank.
Now, best case scenario, um, by adding a green strip in between the sidewalk and the parking area, you also improve the aesthetics of the site. I think it's less important than the safety issue, if the issue appears to have been addressed here.
Um, we, earlier, um, I didn't get a chance to get your name, sir. Uh, your, your architect was, wanted to stand up and say something and I. Uh, deflected that because we had the other chaos going on. Uh, but I wanted to give the opportunity to recognize if there was something you still need to tell us.
Well, my name's Gordon Julius. Hi. And I, I was just. Unaware that you had not seen the site. Submit.
As we're, as we're weak.
Right, so I just wanted to bring that up, so that the subs- substance of what I was saying uh, was, has already been addressed. And that's. Essential of the deferred sidewalk. And, and. Uh, we've spoken with Mike and discussed the parking lot there too and. There are questions like striping and. And things like that, that we're in agreement with in principle. And the deferral of this uh. Sidewalk would be good for us initially, uh, and it also would kind of. Bear out how the parking lot working out. So. No, when, if it turns out that we need ten spots that are up in the corner for uh, staff. Down the road, but you know, it could be a year from now. And the other points, uh, there is a, a walking striped walking lane in the asphalt. That is east-west, which reflects at a crosswalk, which is five feet, which is. So I, and I think we just pointed that out too. Uh, other points on landscaping is, uh, I'm sure that your. Ordinance, I, I haven't looked at it yet, but I'm sure that your ordinance allows. Existing trees on the site and there are quite a few existing trees on the site. That will help us meet the landscape requirement. So we've. Put a few mature, a few ornamental trees on the corner. And there really aren't a whole lot of places to put trees. Time is really undefined. So there's going to be a time where the city is going to delineate that street and the right of ways. And the opportunity for a. Sidewalk defined on that right of way. I think the right of way goes right up. That creates all kinds of weird problems. You're going to ask us to do this, uh, but we aren't really sure where it's going to be, whether it's going to be. Right on that line or. Some defined, undefined location, so we're expecting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing Mr. Womack would not deliberately have you put a sidewalk in a place where it wasn't possible because.
Well, and something we're also not talking about is that, um, you guys know this, they don't, is that the city has started putting money aside. For assisting sidewalks be installed in these critical locations. Uh, we're spending about a million dollars this year on new sidewalks. Next year, a new sidewalks. Um, but we're putting together a separate fund for the installation of sidewalks in these critical locations. Uh, for new businesses, for uh, you know, kids coming from the mobile home park, whatever it is. Um, so even if we were to install it, there probably would be some kind of financial.
Oh. Thank you. So, do we need to hear anything else or are we ready for a motion?
I have a, we have a motion written down that I could lead as one of you that would like to adopt that as. That would be helpful.
That would be probably the most amazing thing I've heard today.
This would be a motion to approve the request from Jennifer Ruzma for a special land use permit. Uh, for a licensed shelter care center on property located at one ninety, is it one ninety or one ninety-two? Did we figure that out at the last time or is this? When, so this is one ninety north main street and the site plan dated November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. As it meets its special land use approval standards contained in section thirty-two dash five forty-seven. Subject to the four conditions listed in my report. Which are the applicant shall obtain and provide the city with copies of all applicable permits obtained from federal, state and county agencies. Improvements shown on the developed site. State ban rating, a plan prepared by Julius Architecture received by the city on November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. Will be constructed in strict performance with those approved plans, including that limited to the proposed landscaping. shall be all requirements of the city of Cedar Springs Fire Department, city engineer, city manager and others deemed necessary. Or drainage calculus and shall be provided for review and approval by the city. Those are the four that I have. If there was additional language with respect to sidewalk that would need to be added.
So, so the deferred sidewalk is shown on the site plan. The only thing I would have added was the engineer would.
I will make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify with aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so in your absence, Mr. Womack, we moved on past item ten A already. I'll entertain the, if you have something you wanna add that we didn't get, when you get to your uh. You get to your manager comments later, but in the meantime, uh, we're at ten B.
Yes, um, so I apologize, I was rushed on this one. Um, there were some significant changes that kind of came to me at the last second. Um, basically, we have two table of uses and ordinance, um, for the long timers on the board, you know, we've worked on that. Significant amount back. Um, but, um, fortunately, Tim Johnson wrote the ordinance. Um, and it didn't specifically say, well, we're getting rid of the old ordinance, even though that was kind of our understanding, which both you and the city council. Agreed to at previous meetings. So. Um, our, our Munich code folks who actually, you know, write the, the online ordinance for us and keep track of that. Have asked me to put together an ordinance that would basically get rid of the old version of the table of uses. Um, so that's kind of where we started at, but then trying to take the opportunity to eliminate the. RR and B one zoning districts, which we previously eliminated, because there's a dozen or so spots in the code where those still. Show up. So trying to put those all together, and I guess I'd call this a draft ordinance at this point. Uh, I'd like to go over it again with a fine tooth in my free time, but that's kind of what the goal is there.
Do you think for us at this point, or it's just letting us know you're doing it?
I think so, more ayes the better, but um, yeah, it's, it's a fairly complicated ordinance and it takes a lot of organization.
I request to be excused, my airbags are acting up.
We'll write ahead. We'll, we'll see you at the next one.
I told him my car out and I, those airbags really worked well.
I'm glad you're safe.
Go, go take something strong enough to deal with it.
Where was that? My sister got ran into on one thirty-one, slammed into, and she didn't put her brakes on.
Have a good rest of your evening. Okay, then we'll move on to item ten C.
Yeah, so the city has a new business in town called the Super Monkey Vape Shop. It's located at the strip mall. Uh, at the northwest corner of Main and Muskegon. Number of issues, but the main issue is their proposed permanent signage. That's what I'm here to talk to you about today. So the city has an ordinance, uh, thirty-two, six, five, one, which prohibits box signs. That has been on the books for much longer than I've been around. I don't know the impetus of that. Um, but that's what it says. So there are a significant number of box signs which exist in the B two district. Which I don't know if those were approved of before I was here, or if they were illegally put up at some point after that. Um, I, I just don't know. Part of the issue is not only is what Super Monkey proposing a box sign. Um, but box signs are, I think, what you'd see almost all businesses proposes their signage. Whether in the B two district or not. Again, maybe this is more Mr. Moore's area, but even channel cut letters that you see in some of these businesses are technically a box sign. So, uh, I guess I'm looking for a little clarification. Uh, as to what the planning commission intended when they prohibited box signs. Uh, and then also we need to discuss the definition of what box signs is in the signage ordinance. Um, and then I think probably best course of action is. Ask Mr. Moore to come up with some appropriate language for the type of signage we'd like to see in the B two district. So, you know, outside of the B two district, our primary business location is the H D district. Uh, generally you have. Better financed businesses that go out there, uh, they tend to spend a little bit more money on their signage. Um, unfortunately, some of the kind of, you know, storefronts in the downtown district. Uh, attracts some less financed businesses. So oftentimes we find ourselves fighting with these new businesses who wanna put up uh, flexible banner type signs. Basically these square plastic sheets that they screw into the wall type signs and box signs, because these are what's cheap. I think we need to have a more encompassing ordinance that says, here's what we allow in the downtown. To help get rid of the very cheap looking signs. Uh, I know it's not great for, say, a mom and pop business trying to start. Um, but I, I also think that the poor quality signage significantly impacts the aesthetics of the downtown. I think, uh, very low quality signage makes our downtown look cheap. So I'd like to address that, so. Back up here for a second, take a look at the signage. Didn't we have a, a page that we're on?
Page fifty-three is the graphic of the sign. It's hard to make it fit on the book over here.
Yeah, okay, so, um. I, I will state that, you know, the permanent signage, um, company that approached me initially had the sign basically as. Rectangle that you see here and the graphic of the monkey was on the rectangle. I said, hey, look, box sign, we can't allow that. So they then submitted this, um, basically making the argument that if you look in that same strip mall. Um, I think it's the Jasmine Thai. Uh, Jasmine Thai has a box sign. It's kind of a oval box sign and it's got some irregular shapes. That it was, at least it looks different. It looks interesting. It's a little bit more eye pleasing. Um, so his argument was, well, yeah, it's still a box sign, but at least it's a different shape. So I think the requesting approval for that based on the fact that, uh, it's not a typical box sign. But again, I don't know what the intention of the planning commission was. In, in making that part of our assigned ordinance.
Predates my planning commission.
No, when I, when I came on to the planning commission, the very first thing we did, lighting. And uh, like the uh, neon. Billboards, like you see on churches and stuff, we talked about those. The lighted signs, yes, and then we also talked about the box signs in the B two. And you brought up the point that there are some that have been there, but they were. So. Grandpa, but as long as they kept them up and made them look nice, they could keep them on the building. But if they took them down, they could not go back up with a box sign. That's what we determined.
Yep, so you're talking about twenty eighteen when we last addressed the ordinance, but as Mr. Conley was indicating, this has been on the book since long before twenty eighteen.
Prohibition against box signs.
Okay, okay. I don't know if anybody on this board was there at the time. Um, but even then, the, the, the discussion was probably lost. But if you go to, I think it's page fifty-five, you're gonna see box sign is defined as. An internally illuminated sign with a solid frame to which plastic metal or other similar sign panels are attached. So it's problematic in a number of ways. First of all, illuminated sign. You know, if it's not illuminated, is it not a box sign? Uh, and second of all, a solid frame. So up and down main street, you see what's essentially a box sign base, which has just been screwed into the wall, which looks. Base, which has just been screwed into the wall, which looks even cheaper than a box. Um, so I don't know, uh, again, I, I'd like to give us some more because that's more his specialty, but I think we need to develop some standards about what do we allow in the downtown? Of keeping in mind that we don't want things to be ridiculously expensive. We also just want to eliminate the, you know, I'm not going to put any amount of money into my signage either. Um, so that's part of it, but, you know, I'm kind of stuck with this Super Monkey issue. Uh, I, I don't know what the planning commission wants. Do they want to eliminate, you know, the rectangular box sign, which is the old, old, old style? Um, when we say box sign, are we not really saying box sign, we're saying square rectangular box sign?
Um, I know what I think when I hear box sign and, and again, I, we keep alert, alluding to Mr. Moore like he's not here, but I'm gonna. Definitely want to hear what you have to say on this. Um, I think of those old signs hanging out the side of a building that started out as clear plastic and now they're yellow. And the, and the, the, it's all faded away. And, you know, it, it. It lets you know a ghost town starts here. Um. That we don't want, but I don't know what modern materials have. I don't know, I don't know if that fading is still an issue with the way that, the way they're made now. I'm not sure. Um, and beyond that, I, I would have to get my Ouija board out to try to figure out how it was originally. What the original intention was, as you said before.
I, I saw the box signs like not what is up at the Main Street Plaza where this is going in. But like, uh, you had a picture of it, Peacock's. Uh, the Pet Plaza, that was always in like that trip where, um. Uh, triple eight bar was or whatever. That always to me is what a box sign was, the old outdated. And it looked so outdated. That's what I thought box sign was. And so I wanted to get rid of those because they're just so outdated and.
Well, and.
They don't look good.
We're talking about a couple of things. We're talking about, hey, we need some signage standards in the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because whether it's square, rectangular, whatever. Um, I, I think there's a lot of businesses that've kind of taken advantage of the cheapness of signage and they just do not reinvest in their property. So whether it's yellow and faded, or it's just a cheap sign, it makes the downtown look bad. Um, but then the next question is, well, what do you want me to do with the Super Monkey sign? It's a box sign, but at least it's got a little, you know, scroll work. It's got, you know, some rounded lines off. Uh, I could approve it subject to, well, not subject to, but. Uh, approve of it and say, hey, we're going to work on our sign standards and it could become non-conforming. Or it could be not conforming from the, you know, the inception. Uh, while we're working on standards. I could just as well reject it and say, hey, look, you've got to put in channel cut letters like everybody else. Uh, because the majority in that strip mall, as you were indicating, have scroll cut letters.
Is that what they have?
Um, I, I think so. Uh, Hungry Howies is a good example, what channel cut letters look like. But none of the signs that you guys have in your packet are that. I picked out signs at front on Main Street that I would. Like to see not be used.
Did the brewery get, or the brewery shop get?
Uh, I suspect that that has been there forever. I do not believe that's new sign.
They just re-put their stuff in it.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah.
We do have a policy that says if you have a sign where you can replace the base. Uh, you can do that without even getting a permit. You just can't increase the size of the sign or anything like that.
Alright.
Again, this is part of the problem of having non-conformity.
But some of these signs started out as a temporary sign and they just never.
Maybe.
Replace them.
But. Part of the, something I was discussing with the code enforcement officer is that at least some of these signs, they don't actually have a frame. If you don't have a frame and you remove the sign to be replaced, I think it loses its non-conformity at that point. So whatever standards we input in the future, they'd have to, you know, come up with any new sign. But the problem ones are the ones where they do have a frame and they can simply replace the face. Those will be there forever.
Mm-hmm.
But heck, even replacing with face sometimes would make some of these signs look nicer.
So in this whole strip mall, sorry.
We'll right ahead.
So in this whole strip mall, there's a bunch of box signs, in other words.
Yes and no. So again, I'll defer to Mr. Moore on this one, but, um, I think it's page sixty-seven. You'll see the Cedar Springs Family Chiropractic.
Yeah.
Sign, and then you see the Main Street Jasmine Tide.
Hmm.
Also, the Cedar Springs Family Chiropractic is what I think of as a classic box sign.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Main Street, uh, at least has some scroll cut letters. And then I, I think that's the hair cutting place next to the family chiropractic.
Super, super cuts.
That's kind of scroll cut letters as well.
Hmm, okay.
Looks so much nicer.
Yeah.
Um, and again, so Main Street has the scroll cut letters, but then it has the oval, you know, shape to it. Uh, the box sign portion of it.
And I, I, I don't think that we would say you don't want any box at all to be in any element of your signage, even if it's a, even if it's a.
Yeah.
Even if it's an accent. I mean, this, these are, these are the channel or scroll cutter. I'm not sure the exact term of this Main Street. And then they have an element underneath of that that happens to be an oval. Um, that's not the same as you only have this, just this one box sign in front of your building.
I'd really like to review some others. I was just looking at Google, looking at downtown G R, downtown Rockford. Know what the revamping they've done in those places in the last twenty years. And I'd be interested to see what they have for their sign ordinance and see what we could. But here, I mean, I'm not against the box sign, but I'm also. Getting starved downtown looking trashy. And adding a little bit of class to it as well.
I, I really want to get Mr. Moore into this because we, we have kind of an expert, I think, so, and.
Well, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask him a quick question.
Right ahead.
So directing this at Mr. Moore. So looking at strip malls, like we're looking at the Main Street Plaza versus downtown. Is there a way that we can have? Separate but equal, maybe. Kind of not equal, but different signs for downtown versus like strip malls. Because.
Zone differently.
Well, I was gonna say, so this is zone B two.
Right.
Zone downtown that. I mean, yes, you could do it. You could say. You can come up with anything. You could say, you know, a property is north of a certain street.
That's what I was wondering.
Well, how, you know, must have these types of sign. I think when it comes to, so there's a few thoughts. One, signs are like the most impossible zoning topic to deal with at all. Two, um, I haven't seen a prohibition on a box sign like this before. Um, but what we do see sometimes is especially in downtown communities prohibits internally illuminated. You know, they will say, we don't want the sign inter- internally illuminated. We want a flat panel on the outside of the building. We want external illumination on the face of the sign. Like a lamp that comes out and shines back on the face of the sign. Because communities are sometimes trying to avoid the, you know, cheap look of plastic box sign or. I don't, don't have as much of an issue with them, but some of the, the channel cut letters that are all internally illuminated, plastic letters that are glowing all night long. Um, stuff like, stuff like that. So there are different ways that communities are trying to. Trying to do this. Um, and then the last thing that we have to be a little careful of, and I don't know how far it goes. We're talking about, you know, shapes and boxes and stuff, is that we can't get into content. They just want to talk about, you know, we talk about signs, we can't. Have anything regulate signs based on what.
Not tentative.
Don't know if that would get into shapes or something like that, but we'll just have to be a little careful. Um, so if it's, if all of these properties are, are within the same zoning district, I mean, typically we see. You know, in, in B one, these types of signs are permitted. In B two, these types of signs are permitted. It's a signs permitted, separate maximum sizes. Electronic message boards or electronic signs permitted in some, but not in other districts. Illumination permitted in one district, but on, but on another. So you can. You can divvy it up however you want, but when it's within the same zoning district, it'll be a little trickier to come up with a. You know, with a work, workable and, you know, cohesive strategy.
The, the only thing. That, the only reason I was asking was because if we looked at from, um. The downtown businesses. Like, what would be nice is when you see Rockford or one of these others where they have. A sign that is projected from the building that's like hanging from the, you know what I mean? Like. Yes.
So those are called projecting.
And those which look nice, they can look nice, they can look nice. But yet that probably wouldn't look so good in a strip mall, you know, so. I mean, I don't know.
Oh, so like in a strip mall, those look okay. They're just not particularly useful because with a strip mall, people are looking at them. From the front of the building, if the sign is coming out like a blade like this, you can see it. Those strip malls typically like to have something flat up against a wall sign, basically something flat up against a wall. So I think in those instances, we might be able to look at. Um. The method of illumination. Um. Yeah, the curious, so the, the other sort of observation I guess I have with. With box signs versus channel cut letters and all these kinds of things. Um. If your challenge, we need to be able to show that you have like. What's the rational relationship, you know, what's the, what's the rational relationship between the regulation and the, in the interest that the government is trying to. We can identify. How we do it, we'll have to be a little careful to make sure that we're sort of really stating what our objective is.
So it seems that at the moment, we're kind of stuck with the big thing that we have, the big instrument that we have. That we're kind of looking at down the road. What can we do to tighten this up? And we have to define what we're looking for and then figure out how to write it.
So I think, um, with the way that box sign is defined. In the ordinance. Um, you know, to Mr. Womack's point. It would, you know, so it says box, but it doesn't say anything about the actual shape of it, so. Any solid foot, any, any internally illuminated sign that has a solid frame. Regardless of whether it's a square or a triangle. And it would be subject to whatever this prohibition is. Have not been here long. Relation of that over time. A bunch of them. Some of the other concerns I think with respect to, you know, if they fade, they. Start to look junky after a while. You already have standards in this own ordinance. General maintenance and upkeep and. You know, keeping them in good, you know, good state of repair and all that kind of thing. We could probably strengthen that language up a little bit too, to address. Cracks and fading and things like that, but I think Mr. Womack is correct with box sign. Stay there forever, and we've dealt with this in a lot of different communities, whether they're freestanding signs out by the street. Well, instead of there, it's cool, we're just going to print a new plastic panel, slap it right on the front, boom, sign's done, and it's the same. And stays there forever and ever until, uh, it falls over or. Some other drastic thing happens and the parasite gets redeveloped, but they have a, a really long life because of that. That bit of. Lot part of busted panel. Replace a light bulb inside, put a new face on it, boom, there you go. Technically, they can get around a non-conforming issue with that because it's not. Reasonable usually for someone to, you know, have to tear it down.
Surprisingly, the issue we have is that people will put up signs in the middle of the night or on the weekends and then. Yes, we find that all the time, and when we say, hey, you didn't get a permit for that, it's kind of a block. What are you going to do? Force me to take it down? Um, we have an unruly bunch of businesses sometimes.
That, that's probably the reason why signs are such a difficult issue, because businesses are. Really good at finding the technicalities which are important. We can read in there like we have with the depth of the box sign. Use them at their advantage. Is it, is in that more difficult position, right? It's, it's a more difficult position. Politically, it's a more difficult position.
City is not business friendly if you don't approve my sign.
That's what it gets said, whether you like.
You're laughing, but that's the reality of that.
And looking at, looking at the definition, it, when it says box signs means an internally illuminated sign. Well, like Peacock's, I'm sure at one time it was internally illuminated. I've never seen it lit up. But, or the, uh, Branzel Place is at the triple eight.
So technically Pe- Peacock's is no longer a box sign, because it's not internally illuminated.
Exactly, so that, so they just turn off the lights and now it's, now it's better.
Good.
They change the sign type. Yeah, and so those are, are, are some of the challenges with the, with the definition is when you add all, all that language in there.
I'd really be interested to see what, like, especially Rockford's, I feel like where, where Rockford was twenty, thirty years ago. With the growth that we have right now, and I'd just be interested to see what their sign ordinance is and how it differs from ours. I was just looking at their downtown, it's, it looks nice. They don't have crappy stuff just drilled to the side of a building, at least from what I saw with a quick peek. So I, I haven't read their ordinance, but as Mr. Moore is indicating, these signs have kind of really been. Or less due to Gilbert versus whatever that case was.
Need, need Gilbert.
Um, so I, I don't think there's going to be much difference. I think the difference is you've got businesses in Rockford that want money. Know what it is. And they, they want to project a higher quality. We just don't have that.
Well, the feeling is probably as their downtown matures and grows and we make it more user friendly, then we'll get a better. State of businesses in there that won't prove the signage, is that it?
That's part of it, but I'd also like to take the opportunity now to do what we can.
Agreed, agreed.
Um, to encourage this. Uh, because otherwise it's going to be the same stuff that we keep seeing.
So can I break this up into two issues? Is there anything we can do for the short term for you with this particular sign? Help clarify what you are doing.
Yes and no. So, you know, this is a box sign. I'm either going to deny it and, you know, then he's going to. Claim that we're not business friendly and that, you know, we're requiring too expensive signage, whatever, whatever. Oh, and also look at that guy. He's got a box on, why can't I? Um, or I could approve it, uh, and say, hey, look, you know, probably non-conforming. Um, but I understand due to the ambiguity in the ordinance while we're. Uh, addressing it, we'll approve it for the time being, and now we are kind of stuck with a sign. Which wouldn't be the first time.
Where's the sign going exactly?
This would be the wall sign in the old check cash-in place.
In the corner.
Corner, um.
We got one box sign.
Along the Main Street, that's the last building.
Oh, where the tan was.
Yeah.
Where Seventeen Mile and Muskegon.
Where Hungry Howies is.
Okay, oh, right there. Hey, that's where I thought it was. Yeah, we're family video, you see that, yeah.
So I, I would prefer, if you could ask them to do the scroll cut letters, I do like that from, when I was looking at Supercuts and Hungry Howies, I do like that. Um.
Oh, it looks great, but it's expensive.
But they want the monkey, they want the monkey.
So the monkey is fine. They could even.
They want the monkey, yes. Just like Jasmine Tide, they could do that where they have the scroll cut letters and then they add. They could do something like that, but I guess it would be expensive.
Main Street was already there for one thing.
Yep, Main Street is a long time old.
So they put. Only a box sign up. Yeah, and tied it.
I also have no problems going back and saying that. I say, hey, look, you've got to do Super Monkey Smoke Shop or. Reduce the number of words you're using, because that's a lot of letters.
Hmm.
Um, or maybe you say, hey, look, you can maybe put Super Monkey as part of the monkey, you know, box sign and then. I, I don't know. I, I'll, I'll work on something with them. I'm just trying to figure out what you guys want. Doesn't look good.
Well, I hate to okay it.
The monkey's right.
And already it's a question on our ordinance that we already have. And I hate to okay it and then have you okay it and then, you know, say to them, well, you might have to change it later. I mean, that's not going to happen. You know that.
For somebody to change it.
Right, yeah, it's not going to happen.
But what I could say is, you know, it's approved as it is, but, you know, it's a non-conforming sign at that point. But it's going to be with this rectangular shape, it's going to be reused forever.
If it's non-conforming, it's non-conforming, but.
Yeah, but it's so.
And we say that.
Yeah, but even if it's not non-conforming. If. Super Monkey in some point in the future.
No, I was.
Someone else is gonna like come in, put a new panel in there.
No, what I'm saying is it's non-conforming. We shouldn't even let it happen, is what I'm saying, because it doesn't conform.
So is, is this a square panel with the super monkey on the square panel or is the super monkey separate from the square?
Panel, which uh, is again with tie, uh, Jasmine Ty. You see there's part of it which has been wiped out and, you know, they've kind of manipulated the sign the way it was. And just to miss that's it's in the point. So when we receive complaints from business owners about how we're not business friendly. Just remember to tell your city council members that when they review the city map.
Okay, so that's the short term. And then long term, it sounds like we need some ideas and guidelines for how we can tighten this up.
So I know Mr. Moore's got some preparation regarding uh, Gilbert versus Reed. I think we probably at the very minimum could put together a list of. You know, here is, you know, signage we will approve. Uh, because uh, as Mr. Nixon indicated, the projecting sign, I think that, uh, the Redbird, the Redbird has projected.
Yes, yes.
Looks great.
I love it.
There are some projecting box signs.
No, please no. Oh. Yeah, the trip right across the street, projecting box sign.
So we'll have to get into some of those issues, but um, things like uh, what do you call it? The little. Thing that overhangs your door. Honning signs look great.
Oh, yes.
That's what we have at the salon. We have an awning sign. Those aren't that expensive. My boss.
I mean, even if you took, even if you took some of these signs, like that you're seeing downtown. Like some of these, let's say, flat signs and you put. You took some, let's say, one by two or one by three and painted it. Or stained it and put it around your flat sign. Now it kind of projects the flat sign, but it also looks a little better. You know what I mean? And that would look a little bit better.
Sounds like a box sign by a different name.
Enhance box sign.
Yeah, I think the thing we're stuck on is the shape, right? That's what it sounds like to me. Like I have no problems with the way the Cedar Springs brewing sign looks. It's great. It's classy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And the round one that juts out. I mean, I think that type of may be a box sign because the way it's done and it's lit up, but.
Also, now you're getting to the, the problem of a well-financed business.
No, I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it.
What is it about the box sign? Like you said, it can be there forever. But when they're replacing things that they keep it up. What else is your other, what, is it fade still? Does it, I mean, what is your?
I mean, there, there's a lot of different issues. Um, the fading is a significant one. Um, but it's also, I hate to put it this way. Boring shape. Um, and a rectangle can, you know, be printed on plastic, any signage you want. Um, the nice thing, if you want to call it that about channel cut letters, is, you know, if a channel cut letter business goes out of business. Unless you're gonna be named the same exact thing, you have to replace the sign.
Or do it.
Notes on this, this sign legal thing that came up the REB.
Oh, so that's what we were talking about earlier about the content of the sign. So if somebody wanted to come in and put a marijuana leaf on their sign or a swastika on their sign. You can't deny the sign based on that reason. We can deny signs based on size, material, uh, you know, other issues that are content neutral. The second we start saying, well, you can't put your monkey on the sign.
Yeah, that's violation.
Really?
Anything that if you're defining or regulating a sign based on what it says. You have to read the sign to figure out what kind of sign it is. So you can apply that kind of regulation and. So a lot of ordinances with the buying. Real estate sign is something that you'd stick in your yard that says for sale on it. Well, only way to tell. If a real estate sign is in fact a real estate sign is to read it. So you have to come up with a different way of reading. Really difficult for those types of signs, political signs. It's, it's made it all for way more complicated than it ever needed to be. Signs have always been, been difficult or more difficult. As of this, but.
It really has to do with content on the sign rather than shape, size.
Correct. Yeah, so I guess the, the thing that I was pointing out with shape is that. Because. Shapes or symbols or whatever could be. Someone might be able to argue that. You know, by telling them what kind of shape their sign.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
Maybe in the shape. Maybe if it was in the shape of a rainbow, then that, you know what I mean? That might be something that we could not, you know, do. Yeah.
Okay, so when we, when we started the marijuana ordinance. We discussed not having the leaf in like the window, but you could have like the green gloss or something.
So um.
And now that's gone.
It was actually the opposite discussion. So. Marijuana ordinance, which is a state law, um, specifically says that you can limit their signage. However, Gilbert versus Reed is a US Supreme Court case, which takes precedence. So even though the state law says we can do it, uh, I don't want to get into that fight.
Okay.
Probably would lose under federal.
Well, thank you for clarifying because that, that, that's what was going through my head. I was like, hang on a second.
Be completely honest, I don't care what you put on your sign. I really don't. Your customers are going to judge you on your signage, right? My concern is about the size, the quality, you know, the things that we're talking about today. So I, I guess uh, for this sign, I'll go back to uh, the signage maker and try to negotiate out some better, higher quality sign that. You know, won't be this ugly box sign that will be around forever. Um, and I think Mr. Moore and I will start doing some research on maybe other uh, personalities and any language they might have. Um, and try to figure out a way to limit uh, the types of signs you have in the downtown to perhaps in, in, improve their quality.
Yes.
Um, and then a, a third thing, which is the DDA. The DDA is constantly talking about how the downtown looks bad. Um, I, I think signage is a part of that. So I don't see why the DDA couldn't have a program saying, hey, we'll help you buy and improve your signage. The difficulty with that is. Uh, the board members of the DDA are current business owners. Current business owners are not always uh, wanting to help fly by night businesses spend lots of money on their signage when they don't know they'll be around next year. Um, so maybe it could be, hey, your business has been around for ten years and your sign looks like crap. So here's some money and go get a new sign.
I have a one more question. Is there already a sign that was there?
What do you mean?
At that, at that location.
Uh, I think it was probably removed.
Okay.
Um, which again, sometimes happens because right now they have a banner sign up there slapped up against the, the wall.
Now, is there a limitation on how long a banner sign can be up?
Yes, um, so I've adopted a policy um, for a temporary signage, which does a maximum two months. And then anytime you have a temporary sign, you have to then take it back down for half that time before you can put another temporary sign. So if it's up for two months, it has to come back down for a month. And of course, as zoning administrator, I can also make determination of a temporary sign as being used as a permanent sign. Um, but again, in this instance, all the signage was put up without permits or permission. We're kind of trying to figure things out. Thankfully, the permanent signage was not put up there.
Okay, so it sounds like we have that speeding to the ground as much as we can tonight. Let's move to open discussion for issues, not on the agenda. Um, item A correspondence. A one there is the twenty twenty-two calendar, um, like we have all the time. Nothing new there, I'm guessing. Item two is uh, Portland Township Master Plan Update. Says AlGoman, our original, but it's, we've changed that to Portland. Or anything on there we need to. Answer ourselves with? Um, the item three is the thirty west Cherry Special Land Use Public Curing for January third.
Residential house, uh, we've done this a couple of times in the last couple of years, um, where they have to get special. It was a residential use.
That was page seventy-two for those that are.
Because it's where, it's in a.
Very quickly scrolling.
Yeah, I'm sorry. One time. I'm just there. Sorry.
Also on Cherry Street that's been residential forever that um, wants to be allowed to stay in that zone.
Okay.
Basically, it's a banking issue. The banks won't mortgage on a property that's non-conforming. If they get special land use, they're no longer non-conforming.
Okay.
And then uh, item four, the Jimmy John's site plan approval letter.
They're uh, building out. They should be open soon. Um, the franchisee told me that he'd keep me in the loop about my soft openings.
I, I, I happened to walk it a couple of days ago when I was over at the pharmacy.
Looks nice.
We continue to have parking issues with the property owner.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We, I think the franchisee, the Jimmy Johns is easier to work.
Um, then uh, staff comments, uh, city manager.
I was gonna ask Ms. Johnson to let us all know when the January uh, meeting is gonna be, but it looks like it's January third. Um, make sure you guys have, you know, uh, all those dates in your calendars. Uh, I'm just like, I might need a new laptop because my battery's dead after this short meeting.
Not that short.
Oh, okay. It should last longer than two hours. Yeah, I mean, we continue to make progress. These are never easy things to do. Uh, I think sometimes this is a much more complicated and difficult meeting than city council meetings are. Um, but you know, this town's a growing town. Uh, we've made a lot of progress in the last six and a half years. So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Ed from the city clerk. Yeah, we're back.
You too.
Back in a year, aren't we? Uh, thank you, Mr. Member. City comments? Ever gets us up the door quick, that's true. Okay, I, I, I concur. So I don't have one either. Um, reported the city council representative.
And by the time I get back here after being at the city council, I forget what we did. No, I'm not. I, we um, did a review for Mike and we had some other, we didn't have a real um. Which meaning we're still working on the. Multi-family, hopefully that's coming together. Um, but we've got it, we've got everything done that we can do, right, Mike?
Along with the city council.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, we've passed everything, so it's not, nothing to do with us anymore. So that's taken care of. It's just getting them to get on board. Also, um, there's still some um, zoning issues that they have to address. Um, which, so that's not gonna be fun. And um. It's also very helpful to have what comes from here go up to the council. It, it helps us. Big decisions, it helps us get things done faster. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Apparently Mike passed. I think it was a pass fail, so.
It was not. You passed. You passed a flash. Plain color. I won't tell you what colors, but he passed.
I've passed a lot of students with that minus or a plus.
Did you really?
Pluses?
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway. Okay, in that case, we're adjourned.
Expressions seem like C is good degrees or something.